Evening. I believe we have a quorum. Will the town meeting members please sit before the line back there in the front section? Please don't stand up in the back or sit up there. Okay. Why don't we start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask people to shut off and silence their cell phones if you have them, if you check them in. We have some, have a moment of silence in memoriam for people that we have lost in the past year. Roger Bellhumor, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Bruce Martin, Sr., Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Bernadine Drapo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Paul Blaze, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Robert Steimitz, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Esther Gaines, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. William Van Winkle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Midgery Witt, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. John F. Lynch, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Robert Kramer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Richard Luce, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Elizabeth Carpenter, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Dr. Flores Jacobs, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. We're going to need counters tonight. We have in this section over here to my right Kristin Pappas and Deb Duvois. In the middle, Ralph Maroyes and Dave Camasi. And over to the left, Paul Market and Ralph. Mahoney. Oh, Ralph Mahoney, I'm sorry. Sorry, Ralph. Are we ready? Article 1, to hear the report of the Finance Committee and other town officers and committees or act on anything relative therefore. Therefore, here too, excuse me. Mr. Hussey, Finance.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. This Finance Committee reports to Annual Town Meeting, May 2, 2017. Good evening and thank you for your participation in the annual town meeting process. The Finance Committee has completed its review of the town's budgets and CIP for fiscal 2018, which you have before you now. I would like to acknowledge the hard work by our committee and I appreciate their commitment to adding value to the annual budget process. The $64.000,000 budget before you represents a $2 million or 3.29% increase from the final 2017 budget. The largest increases in the budget include almost $1.1 million increase in the school operating budget, an $804,000 increase in employee benefits, $580,000 in the combined public safety budgets, and an additional $210,000 in combined DPW and inspection services increases. These increases were partially offset by significant reductions in debt and interest, down $320,000; the reserve fund, down $135,000; OPEB and outside articles, down a combined $359,000; and no commitment to the stabilization fund at this time, which is normal for our May Town Meeting. Taxes will be increased in fiscal year 2018 by approximately 1.0% following a 1.2-3% increase in the final fiscal year 2017 budget. Cherry sheet receipts are expected to increase by $1.1 million in fiscal 2018 to $12.3 million, which would represent 19.2% of revenue sources compared to 18.0% in the prior fiscal year, or a 1.2% increase. This significant increase coincides with significant growth in school spending in the coming year, driven in large part by additional special needs students-related costs. All other revenue projections continue to adhere to our financial policies, which are conservative by design. Major expense highlights in the budget include an anticipated 7.5% to 8% increase in group health insurance, six staff additions to the school department, two additional police officers, four additional firefighter EMTs, and a single staff additions to DPW and inspectional services. In all cases, department heads did an exceptional job in presenting their budgets to the Finance Committee and their reasons for adding additional staffing. Although the fiscal year 2018 budget process went as anticipated with a general agreement on Beacon Hill regarding local aid, the town still faces some significant financial unknowns, primarily the state's ability to continue this new level of local aid when revenue projections continue to fall short of forecasts and ongoing group health insurance expense escalations, which is projected to increase by $500,000 in fiscal year 2018 for the town. Hopefully, we will have a much clearer picture of these challenges when we conclude the annual town budgeting process at the Fall Town Meeting. Warren articles before you tonight include various standard annual articles, annual contribution to the OPEB trust account, CIP repurposing, and various one-time facility and equipment improvements and purchases. Regarding the Warren articles, the Finance Committee takes the following positions. Articles 2 through 14, yes. Article 15 defer to the petitioner, and I'd like to add that the Finance Committee is conceptually supportive of this article, but we're looking for more funding detail, and that's why we deferred on this. Articles 16 through 25, yes. Article 26 defer to the petitioner. Article 27, yes. Article 28 defer to the petitioner. Articles 29 through 33, yes. Articles 34 through 35 defer to the petitioner. Respectfully submitted, Kevin J. Hussey, Chairman and Kavanaugh Vice Chair, Ed Coleman, Kimberly Holstrom, Mallory O'Brien, Kevin Kennedy, Trevor Sansucci.
Mr. Holstrom.
Good evening. Before I get started, I want to recognize one of our valued board members. She's going to complete her sixth year on the Board of Selectmen, and she's decided not to run this year, but we are going to miss her. Mrs. Denise Brotherton, she's done a lot of work for us, and she... Your dedication, effort, and service doesn't go unnoticed, and we thank you very, very much. I would also like to recognize our town manager tonight. She has a new contract. Her contract has been extended for four years, and she is with us now until January of 2023. And I am so excited to keep her here. The town has done very well, and I think under her leadership and direction, we've been able to move forward like that, and we thank you very much for that. And while I'm at it, our town department heads, our employees, our committees, boards, commissions, and volunteers, thank you very much for your participation in the town operations. Auburn is a better town because of it. And thank you to town meeting members for your participation, your efforts, and your dedication to be here tonight and make the right decisions for the town of Auburn to make us go forward. Thank you all very much. Under the articles for tonight, Articles 1 and 2, the Board of Selectmen defer to the petitioner. Articles 3 through 14, the Board of Selectmen vote to recommend approval. Article 15, the Board of Selectmen vote to defer to the petitioner. We, as Mr. Hussey had mentioned, that we are in support of this, but we still, there are a lot of questions to be answered on the funding mechanism, and we want to be sure that we have all those answers. So we are going to defer to the petitioner and see where the meeting goes tonight. Articles 16 through 35, the Board of Selectmen vote to recommend approval. And that's my report for the night, and it comes from your Auburn Board of Selectmen, Kenneth Holstman, Chairman, Doreen M. Goodrich, Vice Chairman Denise Brotherton, Daniel Carpenter, and Lionel Bertheu. And we have a shortage of chairs here tonight, so I have my Vice Chair and Denise over here sitting to my left. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity and the extension of my contract. I'm very excited to be staying here for the next few years and working with all of you with such a phenomenal team at Town Administration. It's really, we have a tremendous team. I can't say enough about it. So in order to move the presentation along, I know some of you may have seen some of this, but we do have a lot of new town meeting members, and we always at the beginning of the annual town meeting want to make sure everyone understands where your tax dollars are going, what some of the major costs are, and what we've done to mitigate those costs and try to keep everything under control. So as you all know, your tax dollars, this budget funds a lot of different levels of town government, and I won't go through everything on here, but just understand all the services that you see, public works, public services, economic development, emergency management, senior center, training, programs, everything comes out of this budget. And we do our best to maintain the budget and to not go up at a percentage that is not sustainable. We're very happy this year, and Ed Kuzinovich, our CFO and Assistant Town Manager, will go through it, but we're very happy in the financial position that we're in this year, and we're proud to stand before you tonight and present this budget to you. Just to give you a couple of the highlights of the last year, and by this I primarily mean 2016, I know Town Meeting falls in the middle of the calendar year, but not quite the fiscal year, so for the most part, the remarks that I have here this evening are for 2016. So the good news is we were able to maintain our AA2 Moody's Bond Rating and maintain our S&amp;P Bond Rating of AA+. That's because of our strong financial position that Mr. Hussey alluded to. We're in the second year of our Community Choice Power Supply Program, which is municipal aggregation. So for those of you who do not opt out of that program, you've been able to save money significantly over national grid rates for the last two, this will be the second year. This past calendar year, we secured 26 grants totaling a little over $447,000. We, as you know, and thank you for your vote, on January 1 of 2016, the town assumed all operations management and maintenance of the Paketov Golf Course. Ed Kuzinovich, myself, and the department heads, we completed collective bargaining with all 10 municipal bargaining units, and contracts were signed and in place and ready to go by July 1 last year. They're all three-year contracts. We also completed health insurance reform negotiations with 16 town and school unions. We had unanimous approval to go forward on those healthcare reforms, which saved the town upwards of $800,000. We've continued the roadway reconstruction program. This year, we had an auction where we sold three town-owned foreclosed properties, and we brought in revenues of $164,000. And most importantly, we put those properties back on the tax rolls. We signed a community compact with the state in February of 16. Three grants came about from that, an economic development grant for $25,000, which we just finished the economic development plan, the housing plan for $25,000, which is underway, and an early education grant for $14,500 that we're working with the school department on. And we're thrilled to have the opportunity to work with you on that, and that will get started shortly also. We completed the Jury Square Vision Plan, again, the economic development plan. We're still working on the master plan. That is a multi-year process, and it's moving along very well. And I want to thank the committee members for all their hard work, the Chair who is sitting here, Greg, thank you. And the zoning bylaw review process also has continued, again, another multi-year process, but it has to be done. It's a really critical project to us. We had training and implementation of the new open meeting law this year, which was very complicated. It's a new law. It passed. It went into effect in December, and a lot of communities weren't quite ready yet and prepared, but I'm proud to say that all of us here are very prepared, and we, from day 1, January 1, we are ready to go. Under financial management, Ed will go over most of it, but we have adhered to our financial policies, which is one of the reasons we're in such good shape. We do the five-year CIP, the five-year Facility Improvement Plan that we're working on. We still do our five-year long-range budget forecasting. The health insurance reform, we continue to look at how can we save employee dollars as well as dollars for the town and for the taxpayers. All of this has resulted in strong bond ratings, and the reason I said it again is because that reduces our borrowing costs, so we can afford capital projects like our schools and like some of the other things that appear on our CIP list. You will see shortly, we've increased our free cash, increased our reserves, increased our excess levy capacity. We've continued to invest into our OPEB. We've continued to invest into our stabilization fund, and we have very strong independent audit results. Seven-year trend on the increase in free cash, I thought it would be interesting to show you this. The free cash in FY10 was $271,109. It was certified for FY16, that's the last certification we've received because we're still in '17, certified for $9,385,275. So that is an incredible climb over the past seven fiscal years. Auburn is actually ranked 11th highest of all towns in the whole Commonwealth for free cash, and 53 of all municipalities. So if you take out the larger cities, and this is for dollar value, not percentage. So when you take out Boston and Worcester and some of your larger communities, we are 11th in the state. The OPEB Fund, we've continued to put $500,000 into it. I'm showing you here the trend. We are only going through FY17 because until the FY18 budget is approved, hopefully this evening, that, those dollars won't be in there. So right now, that's up to $2.8 million. We did add an additional $100,000 in this current fiscal year at the Fall Town Meeting. The stabilization fund continues to climb. As you can see, the couple of spots where it's dropped, one was for the purchase of the land for the middle school, and one was for the 50% cost toward the purchase of a fire engine. We're also continuing a multi-year roadway improvement program, and as you can see here, the Chapter 90 funds, which are the dollars that the town gets from the state, are augmented every year significantly by tax levy dollars, drainage money, general fund revenues, roadway improvement, and we did at one point from the state for two years in a row, and we didn't this year, no one did, receive pothole repair money. So as you can see, we're getting about $608,000, that's the proposed amount from the state for FY this coming fiscal year, and our total program is $1.5 million. So we're putting another $700,000 into our roads. The unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general operating fund revenue, Ed and I have worked very hard over the last few years to increase our reserves because the bond rating agencies keep raising that bar. So at one point, our goal had been 10%. Then the bond rating, we reached the 10%, they raised it to 12, then they raised it to 18. The last couple of years, it's been fairly steady at 20% to keep the bond rating that we have in this community. So we are at that level of reserve. Unassigned fund balance is a combination of stabilization and free cash, and we're at 20.37%. We do have a free cash policy that has been initially approved by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen made a quick revision to that, so now we are going to go back to the Finance Committee for discussion, but the intent of it is we want to keep our reserves at that level. And then over and above those reserves, we want to be able to use up to 50% of the incremental value of the free cash to use it toward one-time expenses, so we can take on some additional projects in town, one-time expenses without having to borrow, and we can still maintain our reserves. So that's a policy we're looking to implement. Our total reserves, and this is important when you look at the whole picture, our total reserves are $30.1 million. This includes OPEB, excess levy, stabilization, free cash, our CIP trust, our health trust, because we're self-insured on health, our pension reserve, and the high school gymnasium trust. Just a couple of words on the Paketov Golf Course. Since we were here last year, so we did take over this last year in January, so we've gone through a full year. So the calendar year revenues for 2016 were a little over $381,000. The expenditures were $242,000 for a net profit of $138,422 for the two half-fiscal years, the last half of FY17 and the first half of '18. Grant activity, I mentioned, 31 applications we applied for, we received 26, received $447,726 in calendar year 2016. If you look back to 2011, which is when we started monitoring the grants and keeping track of it, we've applied for 160 grants, we've been awarded 131, we've been awarded a total of almost $3 million in grants. Through 2017, so just in the last five months, we've had eight applications, we've been awarded $82,000 so far, and we have four pending. Development, I won't go through all these, I just want, for those of you who are new here, to understand that when you see the budgets before you for the different departments, the departments have multiple tasks in front of them and multiple layers of what they do. Development Inspection Services has animal control, Building Commissioner, building inspections, building permits, planning, energy initiatives, Board of Health, and there's a lot of things, as you can see here, that were done just in this past calendar year. Animal Control alone, 896 responses to calls. Building permits issued, 730. These are large numbers, and we're doing it very well with the staff that we have. You will see in the budget that there is an increase in this department, and I think this slide will show you why that is. The Fire Rescue Department, and this is their busiest year in the 99-year history of the department, they received over 3,500 emergency calls. I won't go through all of this. You can certainly look at this tomorrow online if you need to or ask any questions later. I do want to again comment on and thank retired Chief Roger Bellhumor, and you know, we miss him. He, as you all know, passed away on May 22, and he was also our Emergency Management Director, so he was a real part of our town family. And to start off on the Police Department, also want to make a note of Officer Ron Tarantino, Jr., who also, he was killed in the line of duty on the same day, on May 22, 2016. So as you can see from the statistics of the Police Department, this year we did have one murder, and that was the murder. And we had over 21,000 calls and incidences in the Police Department. It is a busy, busy town. Department of Public Works, I went over some of the things. Just want to note, the Facility Management Department does a great job. They renovated several buildings. If you haven't seen the Marion Building in Town Hall, it's fantastic. They just do such great work. Highway Department does great work keeping up with our roads. This was a tough year again with the winter. Didn't seem like we had a lot of snow, but we had a lot of incidences. Under Public Services, just want to make note, a lot of great new things going on at the library. If you haven't been there, please go and see. We've got new windows, new computers, new design. We've got children's computers. We've got a new public service desk that's handicapped accessible. There's a lot of great things going on there, and we've re-instituted the museum and local attraction past programs. So the library director has done a tremendous job. Jean, she's also a town meeting member, so thank you. And the Laringly Norman Senior Center has a lot of great programs going on. We have a new director, Jean Boulet, and we're thrilled to have her on board. We also obviously continue to care about and support our veterans, and our Auburn cable television is here as well. And I just want to note, I'm done with the departments, but I want to know all the department heads, both the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, Andrew Slukas, Steve Coleman, our IT Director, Mike Marino, our DPW Director, Bill Coyle, and our Development, Department of Development and Inspection Services, Darlene Coyle, do tremendous, tremendous work. We are all very, very fortunate to have them as part of this team, and I would put this team up against anybody in the state. They're great. You all know what goes on with the community events, but I just wanted to remind you that we do, in addition to just the day-to-day operations of town government, we're doing a lot for the community. We want to make sure we keep it a vibrant community and offer things for our residents. We continue to do a lot of communications and outreach. We want to make sure we're getting information out to the public when we need to. And, I'm not sure why I did that. Economic Development, we have a lot of things going on with economic development. I won't go through this list, but understand, we are working very hard to make sure that we continue to bring in economic development, business development, and grow our tax base here on a commercial industrial development. Business development, won't go through the projects, but want you to see that there's a lot going on. Three major projects were completed in '16. We probably got over a dozen projects that are underway or proposed right now. This has all mattered. It's all produced a lot of new growth, so we just wanted to show you quickly the new growth five-year history. The five-year average growth was $701,000. The FY17 growth was actually $867,000, and for the last two years, it has been over $860,000. And again, these economic development initiatives pay off, and they're very much worth it. We do a lot on public policy and advocacy. It's really critical that our town administration, all of us, we advocate for legislation, we testify, we go to the State House, we write, we oppose bills that will have a negative impact on Auburn, we support bills that will have a positive impact on Auburn. This is critical to making sure that we continue to get state and federal dollars that the town needs, as well as regulatory changes and improvements so we can function better. And our green initiatives continue. I mentioned the municipal aggregation contract. We also received our third competitive green community grant for $186,000 that allowed us to do continued green upping of our buildings, which saves dollars on energy efficiency measures. And our strategic community partnerships, we work with the businesses, a lot of them do a lot of sponsoring, our concert series, the Independence Day concert are all sponsored by businesses in the community, so we thank them for that. Lastly, just want to thank, again, want to thank the town meeting members for all of your support throughout the year, the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the, all of our boards, commissions, and committees, and the volunteers that work so hard, our legislative delegation, the school department. We have a wonderful relationship with Dr. Mary Ellen Brunel and her team, and all the volunteers and our resident volunteers, you may not be part of a Board of Commission, but the volunteers have been tremendous. The business community, again, very supportive. And last but absolutely not least and never least, the town employees, want to thank them again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kuzinovich? No. No, I thought you were getting up to speak. Article 2, to see if the town meeting will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected officials of elected town offices or act anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, William Violin, Precinct 2. Article 2, I moved at the town meeting vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected town officials for fiscal year 2018 as follows. Town Moderator, $296. Selectmen Chairman, $1,740. Selectmen for, $6,097. Town Clerk, $67,569.75.
Is there a second? Any questions? Not seeing any then. All those in favor, raise your hands. Thank you. All those opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 3, to determine what sums of money the town... To determine what sums of money the town meeting will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for and appropriate, to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide a reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion on article three?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Jeff Mitchell, precinct three. I move that the town meeting raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for and appropriate to pay town debts and charges for the ensuing year. The several sums of money in the proposed budget, as stated in the recommendation of finance columns on pages 21 through 65 inclusive of the Town of Auburn FY 2018 budget and annual town meeting warrant totaling $60,515,579. And to raise said sum by transferring from available funds, $30,000 from cemetery lots and graves, $25,000 from pension reserves, $3,000 from wetlands fund, $24,418 reserved for appropriation dog licenses, $50,000 reserved for appropriation casella host agreement, $912,569 from reserve for appropriation ambulance, $12,000 from overflow trash bags, $83,312.68 from high school, middle school debt reserve, $5,000 from perpetual care, $29,649.15 from state reimbursement, high school band interest. And by raising and appropriating or otherwise providing for the balance of said funds, each total amount as printed in the recommendation finance committee column of the 2017 through 2018 budget, to be considered a specified department appropriation and further, that the finance committee is authorized to transfer between the individual accounts, which total any specific appropriation, when appropriated, when requested by a department and the committee feels such transfer is in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? There is a second. Mr. Kazanovich?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, all. Happy to report to town meeting tonight that we do have a balanced budget that we are going to present to you tonight, while only taxing the residents of this community at a 1% out of a possible 2.5% under proposition 2.5 that will lead to an increase in excess levy. And I'll get into all these details throughout the presentation. So before you tonight, we have total appropriations of $63,953,066.84, equal to that of our revenue sources that we identified, same amount, $63,953,066.84. As you can see, our local receipts, we are estimating $8.8 million, it's slightly over our certified recap approval of $8.8 million, $5,023, minuscule increase. Cherry sheet revenue, $1.42 million increase over current fiscal year, a 10.27% increase. Total revenue of $12.72 million. Tax levy, total utilization of $38,263,595, a total increase of $885,391.74, 2.37% increase. Combined debt exclusion, there are five here, total decrease of $33,777,000 over current fiscal year, and our available funds of $47,323.80, 2.71% increase. Total revenue up 3.29%, $2,036,866.56, same on the appropriation side. Under tax levy, we're utilizing $410,391.74, or 39.61% of proc 2.5. This budget is utilizing $475,000 of estimated new growth. Even though the 5-year average is $701,246, right now, we're not expecting much more than the 475 that we have estimated. This utilizes, in accordance with our financial policies, 1/10 of the allowable 2.5 towards our capital budgets, that's $103,000 and change. And the FY18 budget raises an additional 2 point, almost 2.8 million outside of the levy, as approved by the voters of the community through a debt exclusion vote for the Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School project. We would be taxing at approximately 89.08 out of a total 100% of our total taxable levy. And we're estimating, based upon the utilization of roughly 1%, our excess levy would be at almost 4.7 million, which means we would be, we're not taxing about 10.92% of our total levy. Here's an interesting slide that we're proud to present to town meeting. Over the last eight years, actually nine years, when we presented a financial plan to town meeting in 2010, to build up our reserves in an effort to increase our bond rating, we have not taxed 2.5 over the last eight years. As you can see, beginning in FY11, just shy of 1%, FY12, 0.7813, we didn't use any of 2.5, '14, 1.14, '15, 1.39, '16, 1.89, '17, 1.23, FY18, 0.99. Leading to total excess levy projected $4,691 for FY18. The accumulated savings to you, the taxpayers in this community, over the eight years, we did not tax and could have taxed upwards of $23.4 million. On the cherry sheet side, we're using the governor's proposed state aid numbers. The total cherry sheet revenue increase over current fiscal year is about $1.142 million. We're recognizing a 3.9% increase in unrestricted local aid, which amounts to $64,219. Our chapter 70 increase under the governor's budget is $1,42,725. The House Ways and Means budget has been released, it is higher than the governor's budget at this point in time, by a net of about $40,000, since the revenue is up 92, but our cherry sheet assessments are up $55,000. We are not recommending any portion of that in this budget at this point in time, we're going to wait until we see what the Senate budget releases in terms of state aid, as well as keeping an eye on a revenue shortfall that the state is currently recognizing the current fiscal year upwards of $270 million. Here are the cherry sheet numbers that were released, as you can see in the middle column, that goes to the governor's numbers, in the far right-hand column is the House Ways and Means budget. This is the revenue side, this is the assessment side. Available funds, we're using $100,000 of overlay surplus under Article 30 to fund some additional capital need improvements. It also calls for a one-time use of sale of real estate as a result of an auction that we had, for a new facility workshop to be added on to the DPW facility on 5 Milbury Street, as well as some environmental monitoring that we've been involved in for 15-plus years, trying to close out that project at 5 Milbury Street as well under Article 32. It calls for a one-time use of state reimbursement that we received from the Commonwealth of Mass as a result of a band reimbursement, it's money we borrowed to begin construction at the new Auburn High School, not the middle school. Ambulance proceeds in this budget of $955,000 provide for an offset for the fire department operational budget, as well as meets our capital needs for ambulance-related purchases as well. It uses $110,000 of retained earnings, 100% offset to capital needs under the five-year capital improvement plan, and it utilizes $83,000 and change as a result of money that we received by forcing a premium on our bond issue when we go out and borrow for our Auburn Middle School. We're required to set those funds aside and use it as an offset to the debt and interest costs on an annual basis. We are, town meeting, at our last meeting, established an enterprise fund, a new accounting methodology that we're required to adhere to as a result of some new DOR regulations. Our cable access funds are now going to be part of a new enterprise fund, and so $247,500 is used for operational, as well as capital needs for those, for that enterprise fund. Our local receipts, level funds, most local receipts right now, it's too early to gauge what the actual receipts will be, although we do a quarterly assessment of those receipts. Right now, we're on target to me, FY17, not much growth there, but we will update these shortly after 6:30, '17, and come in with some adjustments at the fall town meeting. Here is our breakdown of our total revenue. As you can see, our tax levy is the bulk of our revenue on the general fund side, $38,000 of 59.83%, followed by cherry sheets, state aid of 12 point, almost 12.3 million, a 19.19%. Our local receipts make up approximately $8.9 million, a 13.84%. Available funds make up about $1.8 million of our total revenue, a 2.80%. And the amount we raised for debt and interest of the debt exclusion, almost 2.8 million, Our total revenue, almost $64 million, up $2,036,000, to 3.29% over current fiscal Here are the, the recommended budget is provided to you in your warrant. Mr. Baker, as you can see, I don't know if you can see the bottom line, but this is a $60 million that you brought to my attention, which is in the motion in Article three, to get to the $63 million, all these other costs that we're required to raise and appropriate for, including outside articles, including Article four for our capital, brings our total budget to $63,953,000. On the expenditure side, it meets all of our contractual wage and bylaw obligations. It provides for seven and a half new full-time equivalent positions funded for general government, not including schools, and these positions are made up as follows. There are four new firefighters as part of the recommended budget for FY18. There are four new firefighters as a result of a negotiated settlement with the unions, who accepted a 0-0-0% increase as a result of a shift change from 48 hours to 42, which will commence on July 1 of FY17. We have budgeted 1.5 positions for the police budget, for patrolman positions, although we are doing a delayed hiring, they are, this budget really calls for two new positions. We are hiring one July 1, with another hire in January 1, which equals 1 half on annualization of the year. There's one full-time equivalent in the Department of Inspection Services, we currently have two part-time positions, we are making both of those positions full-time positions. And this budget calls for a new position in the Highway Department, the position would be a heavy equipment operator. In the school department, it provides for six new full-time equivalents, and I'm sure Dr. Brunel will get into those details when she makes her presentation following mine. This budget increases group health by 8%, it's an increase of about $510,000. It increases our Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment as a result of a biannual actuarial study, it calls for an increase of 12.25%. It increases our Medicare obligation of 1.5% of total gross wages for all our employees, meets all debt and interest obligations. This budget currently does not assume for any permanent long-term bonding. We do have a $5 million ban for our middle school, we're expecting to roll that over until the project is totally completed. There's some additional HVAC work that needs to be completed before we can bond the balance of that project. This budget does call for costs associated with the debt exclusion, I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, of approximately 2.8 million. And it creates a new department org for our Norfolk Agricultural School Assessment, we did an outside article because that placement became known after the budget was presented, not knowing if there would be a long-term impact with the result of a commitment for that one student. The assessment for FY18 is $32,149. It increases our Bay Path Assessment, this is an actual number based upon the governor's budget of an increase of 1.7%, resulting in an increase of $18,531. Our enrollment did increase from the current 88 to 92 for FY18. This budget provides for a level funding of OPEB of $500,000, and as Mr. Hussey, chairman of the Finance Committee, indicated, there is no earmark for stabilization, that's something we'll address at our upcoming fall town meeting. This uses the governor's budget for cherry sheets, charges, and assessments. Once again, this budget is duly indicated, incorporates our adopted financial policies and all aspects of the budget. And the budget includes a five-year capital plan of 1.7 million, and will rely on the authorization for borrowing of $649,000 to meet our capital needs. On the appropriation side, you can see how our money is being spent. Education makes up about 41.12%, followed by employee benefits of 15.77, public safety, combined, fire and police, 11.40, debt and interest at 9.55, public works at 7.66, general government at 6.74. Assessments, offsets, cherry sheet offsets, overlay, CIP articles, in outside articles, 5.12, solid waste at 1.59, human services at .23, and Department of Inspection, Inspection and Economic Services, .83, total appropriations of roughly $64 million. Once again, our total appropriations is roughly $64 million, $2,036,866, or up 3.29% over current fiscal year. That provides for a balanced budget, and once again, the unused portion of levy still remaining, that we did not earmark for, any recommendations at this point in time. This is the balance between the two, full 2.5% and what we would be taxing at just under 1%. That leaves $625,698,000 available for appropriations if we decided, or if town meeting deemed this as a consideration for a future article or an amendment to the, to the budget. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, that concludes my presentation. This will be posted on our website for those of you that would like to see some of the details behind the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
We're going to hold that until we go through the summary?
Wait till we go over the budget, then I'll take the question. Dr. Brunel? Dr. Brunel?
Good evening, Town Meeting Members, members of the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and School Committee. I thank you for the opportunity to present to you the FY18 budget. Aristotle said, "We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence therefore is not an act, but a habit." You will see through this budget presentation that the district's commitment to educational excellence and continuous improvement is unwavering. As we do with each budget cycle, we started with our shared core values as well as our mission and vision. If you'll remember, those of you who joined us back in 2013, we actually started that day with the strategic plan, looking at these values and mission and vision. We also started with priorities. These were priorities set by the School Committee as well as the leadership team, student safety being one of the top priorities that we have. As you can see, one of the items here shows the collaboration that we have with the School Department, the entire town, the police, and the fire. So you'll see in this budget that it increases funding to support district-wide safety measures that address safety advisory team's concern. Our safety advisory team, we're fortunate to have one in Auburn, consists of a representative from the school, police, fire, and our building inspector. It also addresses the social and emotional needs of our students, not only through the consultant with psychiatrist support that's being grant-funded, but also with some additional school psychologist support. It increases the hours of our athletic trainer to support our students' physical needs during athletic events. And per student's IEPs, it increases support with ABA's and IAs as well. Student achievement is obviously another top concern of ours. As you see here, some of the photos that depict our students excelling in competitions outside of Auburn, namely Model UN as well as the We the People competition. Through this budget, we're going to be expanding our STEM offerings at Auburn Middle School by the addition of a STEM math teacher. We're expanding our early college opportunities. We have students now who are high school students earning college credit at very low rates before they go on and graduate. We're expanding our preschool, and the intention of that is to reduce or remove financial barriers. The research is clear on the importance of students having a solid, early learning foundation on which to build their career. And through this, we're going to be able to include more students. It increases our beyond-the-school-day opportunities at our elementary schools and middle schools. And these are ones that are in addition to athletic opportunities. And also for IA/ABA supports, we're very proud to have a unified sports program in Auburn where some of our most special students are able to compete athletically with peers across the Commonwealth. In terms of class size, this is a priority of the School Committee and leadership team. And through this budget, we'll be able to maintain levels at 25 or below as the goal for elementary schools. It will allow us to actually reduce in the core classes at our middle school down to 21 to 22. In terms of technology, we continue to be immensely appreciative of the support received from Town Meeting as well as through the FFNE funds in the Auburn Middle School, that we have a one-to-one program for iPads from grades six through 12, a one-to-two currently in grades three to five, and approximately a one-to-three at our primary grades. We are looking to do a review of the iPad program. And through a lease program, we may be able to purchase some of those at a very significantly reduced cost, increasing those at the elementary level. We have increases in our software and applications because when we have the materials and hardware in our students' hands, they likewise need the software and the apps to fully integrate it into the curriculum. Textbooks is another area of priority. In this budget, we'll actually be planning for new materials for science. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we've been waiting for them to finalize their science standards, and they've recently done that. So with that, we'll be doing a concerted effort to review science materials. In terms of educator evaluation, that is a mandate by the state, but in Auburn, the APS team has really embraced this because in order for our students to excel at high levels, we believe that our teachers need to be at their very best as well. The leadership team actually embarked on a new initiative this year called Leadership Learning Walks, where we walk together into classrooms and then calibrate our practice, making sure that we're seeing each of the same things to bring consistency from classroom to classroom and school to school. In terms of professional development, again, in order to maintain the high level of achievement of our students, we need to support our teachers in continuous learning and expectations for excellence. And I have to say, they rise to that challenge on a regular basis. Another priority mentioned earlier is the strategic plan. I'm happy to report that at this point, from when we first did this in November of 2013, that 75% plus of all of the activities and initiatives have been, have been addressed in even far greater numbers in some of the categories. So with that, with the approval of School Committee at our meeting tomorrow night, we'll be actually looking to establish a new strategic plan come the fall, and I'll be looking to invite you to hopefully join us. So some assumptions that we made in this budget are ones that we make on an annual basis. We do utilize all of our grant funds, whether it's the 240 grant, the Title I, the Title II, or any other smaller grants we receive. We are anticipating Medicaid reimbursement of $160,000. Circuit breaker, which is really to support our significantly disabled students, being projected at 60%. Our school choice slots, we have 45 at the high school and 25 at the middle. We will continue to operate with 11 regulated school buses, and we're using an offset of $88,000 from fees collected. And we do utilize offsets from all of our revolving accounts, namely our rental accounts, our satellite galaxy accounts, our preschool and athletic revolving. And we've also utilized our October first accounts. In terms of new staffing, we are looking to bring onboard a new preschool teacher along with a preschool instructional assistant and a preschool ABA. So that's going to actually staff one classroom for a total of $92,255. To bring on a new Auburn Middle School STEM math teacher is $53,112. And we're going to need an ABA to support incoming kindergarten students that we know already identified in our preschool. One will be going to Bryn Mawr School and one to Packer Chalk School, each at a cost of $23,095, for a total of 6.0 FTE new positions, as Mr. Kazanovic mentioned, for a total of In total, the Auburn Public Schools request is just shy of $25 million, which represents an increase of $1,076,555, or 4.5% increase over our approved FY17 value. Governor Baker's budget that he brought forward actually represented a, an increase in the Chapter 70, which is education funding of $1,42,725, which was just shy $33,000 less than what we had requested. Good news we received out of the House so far that they've actually increased Auburn's Chapter 70 amount by an additional $52,000, actually bringing it so that in Chapter 70, it's $1,979 more than what had been requested. And the Senate continues its work. The original budget that the School Committee brought forward, the leadership team brought forward and was supported by School Committee, actually represented a 3% increase, or a dollar value of $717,183. But what happened is there are a number of students who require outer district placements. We do an excellent job in the Auburn Public Schools of educating all of our students. We design programs when we're able to. So long as we can keep a child safe and the other children safe, so long as we can educate a child without causing disruption to other students, that's always our goal. Legally, we have an obligation per MGL, Chapter 71B, Sections 2 through 6. We have a legal obligation to provide an education for all of our students based on what they need. But in the Auburn Public Schools, I will say, we see it not only as a legal obligation, but as an ethical obligation to educate them in what's termed as the least restrictive environment. And that means keeping them in-house so that they're learning with their peers, and they're learning, and they get a community of learners and support from their neighborhoods. We have recently had some students and some anticipated ones that will be upcoming next school year that raised the amount that we needed. It will be our intention certainly that when we can and as soon as we can bring them back to the district, that we will certainly work to do so. In total, offsets totaling nearly $2.7 million were used in this to minimize the impact of the FY18 budget. And those included, as I said before, the Medicaid receipts, building rentals, athletic revolving, special education article, all of our revolving accounts, as well as school choice and grants. This quote here, or the definition I should say, of teamwork, I think really does epitomize what we do here in Auburn. We work very closely, and I think the great presentations given by Julie and Ed really clearly state the teamwork that takes place in this community. All of this is done in an effort and obviously with us staying with our mission, which is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We recognize that children have but one chance to find success in first grade, fourth grade, ninth grade, and in their senior year. So we need to be sure that we're providing the best for them each and every year. As a forward-thinking school district, we really believe it's our responsibility to be sure that our students are ready to embrace opportunities when they leave us. This, you probably saw when you walked in this evening, actually shows that some of the schools and colleges that our students have been accepted to. So a few highlights about some successes that we're having in the Auburn Public Schools through the support that we have of all of you and the leadership team and the APS team in general. We believe it's important to strengthen connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships. In fact, that's the mission of the Auburn Public Schools. So in terms of rigor, some things that we've done this year, we've transferred over to MCAS 2.0. Our students are immersed in those right now. We have our iPad integration that's ongoing. We have started a Chinese Modified Exchange, although it was slightly interrupted this year. We have done some Chinese cultural work. We have a Madrid exchange that our students do. And in terms of relevance, we work to bring in businesses and work closely with the community. The community service that our students do hopefully gives back and enriches the lives and successes of the community in general. In terms of relationships, one of the things that we have is a co-teaching model here. And that's really where we have regular educators and special educators working closely with students, special students and typical students in classrooms together to best support them. We do, as I mentioned earlier, have a great relationship with all of the town department. It's really one that's symbiotic and one that benefits all. Responding to Needs Based on Data is a critical mission that we undertake here in the schools. So based on the data that we collect, we're constantly assessing our students. We make decisions and changes, but it's always based, the backdrop that we always ask ourselves is, how is this going to impact students and their learning? That is, after all, the most important thing that we hear for educationally. Some recent college acceptances that I hope make you as proud as they do us in the Auburn Public Schools, some, a number of prestigious universities and colleges, some local and some from across the country that really speak to the great program that we have that ends with our students when they graduate. Through our use of CIP funds and middle school funds that we have received, we do, as I said, have the one-to-one program at grades six through 12, and we're moving in that direction for the other grades as well. I'm happy to report, as shared with you at the recent March meeting, that the town saved approximately $1.3 million with our partnership with MSBA on the accelerated repair and the replacement of the roofs of Swanson Road in Bryn Mawr, as well as the boiler at Swanson Road. With the new partnership with MSBA on the replacement of the Packer Chalk roof, yet to be seen how much we will save, but likely in the vicinity of $400 to nearly half a We continue to offer high-level courses that really are rigorous for our students. This is a listing of our APR, Advanced Placement Courses. And as you see here, this is two of our students who were recognized at a Model UN conference with some very prestigious public and private schools around the Commonwealth and did exceptionally well. Our students continue to shine musically, athletically, and artistically. If any of you had the opportunity this past weekend to see Les Mis, that was performed here in this auditorium, it was absolutely astounding. The talents of our students never cease to amaze me. We have a Rocket Marching Band that's now in its fifth year and continues to just outperform any expectations that we had for them. Pack and JB, now Swanson Road Intermediate School, were both recognized, as you know, as National Blue Ribbon Schools, quite an extraordinary recognition. And Auburn High was named Number 31 by U.S. News &amp; World Report in Massachusetts, putting us in the top 10%. We are appreciative of the support of our Auburn Resource Officer, Officer Brian Kennedy. That comes through the support of the Police Department, just another great partnership that we have. We have, as I've indicated already, some strong partnerships across the town. I think it's one of the strengths that we have in this community, not to mention the safety, in addition to mentioning the safety advisory team. As you can see, we had Community Reading Day. Some of you I recognize in the audience, I saw at some of those. We have a great relationship with Julie and Ed and all of the town departments, and we have ongoing dialogue. So in closing, we are a district that is committed to educational excellence and continuous improvement. And we believe that it is our obligation to do all we can each and every day to be sure that our students have everything that they need. This quote by Ralph Marston, "Excellence is not a skill, it is an attitude." And I can assure you that all of us in the Auburn Public Schools have an attitude of truly believing in the infinite possibilities and the infinite success that our students can achieve, given the right levels of support. And this banner stating "We Are Auburn" hangs proudly in Auburn High School, and I hope it gives you as much pride as it does all of us. So I thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Come on page 19, I'm going to read the budget, the totals. If you have a question, please just say "hold," and then we'll go back over them after I've read the whole budget. Number 114, motivator total, $296. 122, selectmen total, $10,987. Number 129, executive office and town manager, total, $359,443. Finance committee total, number 131, $815. Number 132, reserve total, $215,000. Finance department total, $612,323. War total, $120,000, that's number 151. Number 152, human resources, $71,111. 155, information technology, $160,340. Number 161, town clerk, $164,977. Number 162, election total, $14,826. Number 192, town hall total, $39,000. Number 199, general services total, $1360,155. Police, number 210, $4,338,103. Fire, number 220, $2,951,511. Emergency manager, number 291, $11,500. Bay Path, number 302, $1,123,189. Norfolk Agricultural, number 303, $32,149. Number 433, solid waste total, $1,014,996. Number 511, developmental inspection services total, $529,519. Appeals, number 176, appeals total, $13,283. Department of Public Services, total, $1,000,000. Department of Public Services, total, $1,025,954. That was number 641. Youth Commission, number 542, $120,000. Number 691, Historical Commission, nothing, zero. Number 710, maturing debt, $4,651,630. Number 752, interest, $1,454,920. Pension total, $10,84,713. Given us a bottom line of $60,515,579. Are there any questions?
Danny Largis, Precinct 4. My question was, is how do we come up with an estimated tax for physical, for the next physical year of the income? Because I walk through the mall, businesses are dropping like flies in this town. McDonald's is gone, we're losing a couple on Sword Street, the mall's becoming empty. These are all tax income businesses. The town is going down.
Mr. Kazanovic.
Actually, I think Town Manager Julie Jacobson presented a slide in her presentation that shows that the average new growth over the past five years was $701,000. Last year, it was $827,000 of new growth. So despite some of the vacancies you may see, maybe seeing, it's being offset by some new businesses and new growth that's coming on the books. In addition to the new growth, we're allowed to add 2.5 percent of Prop 2.5 to add to our tax levy on an annual basis, of which, evident by the slide I presented in my presentation, we haven't utilized close to 2.5 percent on an annual basis over the last eight years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hi, Paul Wikes, Precinct 3. Reviewing the budget, I was kind of struck by the level of the salary increases. It looks like, in general, they're about 5% to 10% to 15%, especially like the department chairs or department directors, I should say. And I'm just kind of wondering how these salary increases are determined, and if you had a number of what the average salary increase is this year, and also how such a high number is justified in a year where inflation is relatively low. Thank you.
Mr. Kazanovic.
So our average contractual increases for bargaining groups, we just negotiated with 11 different bargaining groups throughout general government, not including schools. The average increase has been about 2% for each one of those bargaining groups. Now, that does not account for any step increases that may be part of those contractual increases. That is a cola value for those contracts. Actually, the three-year package on a cola basis did not exceed 5%. But when you factor in the stepper increases, that factor brings it more over a three-year period to about 6%. Additionally, last year, the reserve account loaded up the contractual increases because the contracts were not negotiated yet. As you can see in the recommendation, the value of the salary and wage reserve account was substantially reduced because we incorporated those increases in the operational side of the budget for the first time in many years.
Yes, sir. Come to the mic, please.
I guess it's not so much like the bargaining units I'm asking about, but if I look, basically the heads of the various departments, I'm seeing increases like 10%, 5%, in some cases as high as 17%. So I'll just pick one as an example, I'm not trying to pick on a particular department, but like the Assessor's Office, 10% increase for the assessor, 20% increase in clerical, and 17% on the assistant assessor. And again, I'm not picking on a particular department, but I see several of them like that, where there are significant increases in salaries, and just wondering what the story is. It could be, though, they deserve it, I know they're all doing a great job, but I'm just wondering how these numbers are determined.
Okay, there were one-time salary adjustments that were done last year for a number of department heads that were approved by the Finance Committee, as well as the Board of Selectmen, as a result of a salary survey that was done with other comparable communities of like size. Those one-time adjustments are reflective in this warrant as part of the original budget. Those transfers were made out of the salary and wage reserve account by a vote of the Finance Committee. Those numbers were presented publicly, but are built into the recommendation for the first time in FY '18.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any, then, and we're ready for the vote. This is a majority, so all those in favor, please raise their hands. All those opposed, it's unanimous vote. Article 4, the CFT Town Meeting will vote to approve a capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2018, to determine what sums of money will be raised by taxation in appropriated transferred from available funds, acquired by lease purchase contract, authorized to be borrowed, or otherwise provided for to fund the fiscal year 2018. Capital improvement budget to determine under whose direction the expenditure of said funds will be made, and to authorize the Town Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time for notes, bonds, or notes in anticipation of bonds or revenues, to be payable in not more than the term provided by law. Said borrowed funds not to exceed sums, as the town may vote, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Baker, Precinct 3. I move that Town Meeting approve the five-year capital improvement plan for the Town Manager, Information Technology, Town Clerk, Planning, Police, Fire, Engineering, Highway, Sewer, Cemetery, Senior Center slash Elder Affairs, Library, Parks, Auburn Community Television and Schools, as stated on Pages 67 through 74 inclusive of the Town of Auburn Fiscal Year 2018 Budget and Annual Town Meeting warrant, and further, to approve an appropriation of $1,717,216 to fund the Fiscal Year 2008 Capital Improvement Program as specified on Pages 63 through 70, under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendation, and to raise said sums by borrowing and appropriating the sum of $862,615 from General Fund Revenues, $25,000 from CIP Expendable Trust, $42,431 from ambulance proceeds, $110,000 from Sewer Enterprise retained earnings, $28,170 from cable access. I also move that the Town Meeting authorize the borrowing of $649,000 for a period of up to 10 years for the items as identified in the five-year capital improvement plan. I further move that prior to purchase, all over-the-road vehicles shall be marked on both front door panels as property of the Town of Auburn for official use only, and have a permanently affixed town seal, and that the expenditure of funds so appropriated shall be under the direction of the Chief Procurement Officer of the Town or School Department.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions?
Chris Haroyan, Precinct 2, just wondering, has the town realized any savings since we closed the two schools, Estel and Hamish, on the CIP side overall?
Without...
I use the word...
Without diving into details, as you can see, our level of borrowing has dramatically decreased over the past five years. Our authorizations to borrow were in the vicinity of approximately $1.5 million on an annual basis. We're now identifying a borrowing of $649,000. That's as a result of a combination of things. Number one, the capital needs on the school side have dwindled as a result of the construction of the new Auburn High School, and as well as the construction of the new Auburn Middle School. I think capital improvements have been made as a result of several school building assistance programs under the state, which is allowed for approximately 56% to 58% of state contribution towards those projects, which has minimized our borrowing. So yes, I would say there is a direct correlation between the new schools and the less reliance of borrowing.
I really meant, I'm not sure that really answers the question, but actual, really realized savings since we closed those two schools. I'm just, I was looking across the board.
Since we closed the two schools?
Yeah.
Well, certainly, we have an outside acolyte before you to maintain the schools until the disposition of the schools is complete. I can tell you the bids are due in on May 8th. It's going to take some time to qualify those bids and to sort through them to see if there are, an award can be made. But in terms of the details, I would, I would ask the school department to comment on that because I don't have that level of detail available.
I pose that question to the school committee or the school department.
So in terms of, if I understand your question...
I use the word "realized" too. I was trying to be specific, not just realized savings since, you know, we're not, we're not investing in those buildings anymore, and I, with the anticipation that we would see a reduction in CIP years later, and I'm wondering if that's a true statement.
I think it is true, in terms of CIP, that we're seeing a reduction in amounts that we have requested. In terms of operationally, though, I don't think that we really have, because we have the same number of students, even slightly more, we simply reconfigured them into new spaces, so the staffing, the salaries is the largest part of our budget.
It's CIP I was referring to, not...
So CIP, I think that we have. Over the years, we have seen a reduction in that, yes.
I was trying to figure it out on here, and I couldn't do so, but I guess I'll take your word for it, so thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else with a question? Not seeing anyone. This is a two-thirds vote, so I'll ask if anybody is opposed to this. Would they raise their hands? Okay, we'll have to count now. So if the counters will come up? Mr. Murphy, there's some behind you too, by the way, when you're doing some counting. No, no, there's some Town Meeting members there, yeah. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please raise their hand. It passes 70 to 3. Article number five, to see if the Town Meeting, oh, by the way, I'm on page 75, by the way. To see if the Town Meeting will vote to authorize the Town Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, and to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Helen Gannon, Precinct 4. I move that the Town Meeting vote authorize the Town Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1, 2017, ending June 30, 2018, to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? Not seeing, then, not seeing any. Then all those in favor, would they raise their hand? Those opposed, it is a vote, unanimous. Article 6, to see if the Town Meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including Department of Elder Affairs Formulas, Grant Funds, which funds the Board of Selectmen, which funds the Board determines to be beneficial to the town, and to authorize the expenditure of any money received as a result of said applications, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mrs. Holstrom.
Kim Holstrom, Precinct 5. I move that the Town Meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including Department of Elder Affairs Formula Grant Funds, which funds the Board determines to be beneficial to the town, and to authorize the expenditure of any money received as a result of said applications.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? All those in favor, raise their hands. All those opposed, it's unanimous vote. Article 7, to see if the Town Meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed bid, or at assessed value under special circumstances, any properties which the Town may have acquired or may have after... which the town may have acquired or may hereafter acquire through tax title foreclosure proceedings, and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore or to act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Dufour.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Dufour, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed bid or at assessed value under special circumstances any properties which the town may have acquired or may hereafter acquire through tax title foreclosure proceedings and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article eight. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensatory balance agreements during the fiscal year 2018 as permitted by Massachusetts' general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or in any other enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposit in banks in return for the banking services or act on anything relative thereto. Yes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Dan Diamond, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensatory balance agreements during fiscal year 2018 as permitted by Massachusetts' general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or any other enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposit in banks in return for banking services.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise their hands. All those opposed? It is a vote. Are unanimous. Article eight. That was Article eight. Article nine. To see if the town meeting will vote to establish or renew revolving funds for various town and school programs in accordance with Massachusetts' general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and one half, in Chapter 44, Section 53D, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Moffett, Precinct Four. And it's Article nine, I believe. I move that the town meeting vote to establish or renew revolving funds for various town and school programs as identified in the attached.
Is there a second? Any questions? I'll bring that up here. There being no questions. All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 10. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Yes. Mrs. Ethia.
Ellen Ethia, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Doug Nelson, Precinct Two. Do we have a listing of roads that's being considered for this at this time? Thank you.
Mr. Jacobson?
Mr. Coyle, DPW Director, can answer you on that. I do know that, and he will get into the detail, but every year, the engineering department rides every road in town and goes through a list of criteria and develops the list, but I'll let...
Mr. Coyle?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tommy members, we're currently developing that list. The funds become available July 1st, and we will present that list to the select board prior to July 1st.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 11. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money, if it becomes available, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Chapter 90, bond issue proceeds, to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Commonwealth general laws, or act on anything relative thereto. Sir.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Bowling, Precinct Four. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money, if it becomes available, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Chapter 90, bond issue proceeds, to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Commonwealth general laws.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Unanimous. Article 12. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $500,000 to the other post foundation benefits liability trust fund or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Yes. Dennis Natali, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $500,000 to the other post employment benefits liability trust fund.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise their hands. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 13. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $160,000 for Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department's operating budget for the fiscal year 2018 to fund supplies in medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district for special needs students, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Vangel Corovo, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $160,000 for Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for fiscal year 2018 to fund supplies and medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district for special needs students.
Is there a second? There is a second. All those in favor? Yes. Oh, any questions? Sorry about that. Any questions? Oh, I didn't see what it is. Yes, sir. You were standing up before.
Bob Plutikus, Precinct One. Do we have a relationship with the WPI or other institutions to help these students that may have special challenges and to mitigate the costs that can be quite substantial in the future? One example is, I saw a kid who had one leg, and WPI provided him with a way to pedal his bicycle by pushing it up and down. Do we have a relationship with those student projects right now with WPI to mitigate future funding?
We don't currently, through the moderator, we don't currently have a relationship with WPI. We do with some other organizations, Easter Seals being one of them. It's all based on students' needs.
If you want, I suggest we look into that. It may save us substantial money and help students whether they may create something where there's nothing on the market to help them.
I appreciate that. We certainly will. We always want to do the most for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 14. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $9,345.06, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gym Health and Recreational Trust Fund, to offset school department costs at Auburn High in support of community health and recreational activities at Auburn High School Gymnasium and related facilities and equipment, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. ...
Mr. Moderator, Ron Crowder, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $9,345.06, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreational Trust Fund, to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health and recreational activities at Auburn High School Gymnasium and related facilities and equipment.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Unanimous. Article 15. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 13E of the Massachusetts general laws, establishing a special education reserve fund, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Deb Valentine, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to postpone this article indefinitely.
Is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 16. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 3, CIP funds from the May 2015 Town Meeting, Central Administration Building Rehab, account number 302016-581638, as follows. Authorize the amount of $45,000 to be used for purposes of window repair replacement work at the Central Office Administration Building, 5 West Street, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Mary Ellen Paquette, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to amend Article 3, CIP funds of the May 2015 Town Meeting, Central Administration Building Rehab, account number 302016-581638, as follows. Authorize the amount of $45,000 to be used for purposes of window repair replacement work at the Central Office Administration Building, 5 West Street.
Is there a second? Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? Those opposed? It is a vote. Unanimous.
One of honor.
Yes, sir. Yes, but there was nobody, oh, yeah, you're right. Nobody was opposed to it. Next one also is a two-thirds vote too. Just so you know. To see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds to support the replacement of the burner at Auburn High School by amending Article 4 of the May 2016 Town Meeting. Kitchen equipment, account number 302017-581743, as follows. Delete the balance of $20,000 for kitchen equipment and repurpose the $20,000 to be used for replacing the burner at Auburn High School, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
That's the wrong one.
It's wrong.
It's 18, isn't it?
We're at 17.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did 17 then. Okay. 17. To see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose the remainder of the CIP funds by amending Article 3 of the May 2013 Town Meeting, Central Administration Building Rehab, account number 302014-581440, as follows. By deleting the balance of $3,862 and adding $3,862 for purposes of window repair replacement work at the Central Office Administration Building, 5 West Street, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Edie Paquette, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose the remainder of the CIP funds by amending Article 3 of the May 2013 Town Meeting, Central Administration Building Rehab, account number 302014-581440, as follows. By deleting the balance of $3,862 and adding $3,862 for the purposes of window repair replacement work at the Central Office Administration Building, 5 West Street.
Is there a second? There is a second. It's a two-thirds vote also, so is there anybody opposed to it? Then, all those in favor, raise their hand. It's unanimous vote. We're getting to Article 18 now. To see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds to support the replacement of a burner at Auburn High School by amending Article 4 of the May 2016 Town Meeting, kitchen equipment, account number 302017-581743, as follows. Delete the balance of $20,000 for kitchen equipment and repurpose the $20,000 to be used for replacing the burner at Auburn High School, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Moderator. Mrs. Granger.
Barbara Granger, Precinct Three. I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds to support the replacement of the burner at the Auburn High School by amending Article 4 of the May 2016 Town Meeting, kitchen equipment, account 302017-581743, as follows. Delete the balance of $20,000 for kitchen equipment and repurpose the $20,000 to be used for replacing the burner in the Auburn High School.
Is there a second? There is a second. This is also a two-thirds vote, but are there any questions? Then, all those in favor, raise their hand. All those opposed? It's a vote. Unanimous vote. Article 19. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $46,000 from the general fund revenues for the care and maintenance of the Mary D. Stone School Building and the Julia Bancroft School Building, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Gough, Precinct Five. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $46,000 from general fund revenues for the care and maintenance of the Mary D. Stone School Building and the Julia Bancroft School Building.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article 20. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of the Acts of 1993, C10, excuse me, and whatever that means for 110, which reduces the required time of dormitories in the state under Chapter 59, 5 clauses 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22F, from the 5 to 1 consecutive years, to be effective July 1st, 2017, or act on anything relative thereto. relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Tom Healy, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to accept the provisions of the Acts of 1993, Chapter 110, Section 110, which reduces the required time of domicile in a state under Chapter 59, Section 5, clauses 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22F, from 5 to 1 consecutive year, to be effective as of July 1, 2017.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Yes.
Ellen E., Precinct 5. What's the residency requirement for? It's a very vague question.
Thank you.
This is a provision that is mandated by the state. It's a state provision.
For what?
Excuse me?
For what? It says it's changing the domicile requirement from five years to one year. For what? For running for office?
So this is, this is an abatement for a relief that's allowed for a veteran who in service?
It would be better if the article was written with a little more information in it.
Thank you.
If I may, just to get a little ahead of ourselves, Articles 20, 21, 22, and 23 are a result of a vote that the Board of Selectmen took to offer relief to our elderly residents, our veterans, for those who may not qualify for tax relief under a statutory exemption. I want to thank a work group that was put together that brought back to the Board of Selectmen a recommendation that does offer some relief by adjusting our income and asset limits to these provisions as allowed under state statute, but it does require a vote by you. So this is a good thing for our seniors in our community by allowing us to offer some additional relief by way of abatements and exemptions through real estate property tax relief.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Use the mic, please.
Kyle Osterman, Precinct 1. I didn't hear the whole thing that they were talking about up the back there. What I got was it's supposed to be reduction for veterans and service-connected disabilities.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I'm now going to ask the assessor to come down because she's more familiar with these chapters and clauses because they deal with this on a day-to-day basis through the assessor's office. I think she can offer some additional information that may clarify some of the questions that you are presenting tonight.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if the article seems a little bit vague. The 22 exemptions, this whole series is for our disabled veterans that have suffered, they do have to be war-related disabilities. And right now, there is a five-year residency, so any veteran coming into Massachusetts, they have to wait a full five years before we can offer them any tax relief. So this would simply reduce that from five years to one year. It doesn't change the amount of relief that we give them, it just gives us the ability to help them.
Anybody else with a question? Mr. Dufour.
I guess my question, a couple of questions that come to mind with this is if it's already on the books with the state, why do we need to like re-ratify it at the town level, or are we altering something that's already approved by the state in changing it to the, say, from the five years to the one year?
Basically, the state comes through with these exemptions, and then they offer a series of what are called basically local options. This is a local option that can be accepted by towns. So it does change the existing statute per the wishes of the town meeting vote.
Any other question? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article 21, to see if the town meeting will vote to reduce the rate of interest that accrues from property taxes deferred by eligible taxpayers under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 18A and G, General Laws, Chapter 59, Clause 5, Section 5, Clause 41A to 4%, with such reduced rates to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after the July 1, 2017, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Martin.
Joe Martin, Precinct 2. I move that the town meeting vote to reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible taxpayers under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 18A, and General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A to 4%, with such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2017.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Maroys.
Two questions, please. Ralph Maroys, Precinct 3. What is the change in rate? It's 2.4%, but what was it before the 4%?
Mr. Kavanagh.
I'm going to look for a nod. I believe it's 8%. Is that correct? 8%.
Okay. And general question for these four articles, if I could. Do we have an estimate as to what this might cost us?
I think we did an impact. I think we believe it would be in the vicinity of about $5,000.
Any other questions? Are all those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 22, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, which allows for an exemption of 50% of real and personal property taxes assessed to Massachusetts National Guardsmen and Reservists deployed and overseas, to be effective beginning in fiscal year 2018, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Tim Cummins, Precinct 3. I move that the town meeting vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56, which allows an exemption of 50% of real and personal property taxes assessed to Massachusetts National Guardsmen and Reservists deployed overseas to be effective beginning in fiscal year 2018.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions?
Kyle Osterman, Precinct 1. You just mentioned National Guard. What about the Marine Corps? What about the Army? What about the Navy? Guys that are going overseas, wouldn't they both be, wouldn't that all be one unit?
We'll refer to, actually, they're coming now, hopefully.
Basically, what this article is aimed at is the National Guardsmen and the Reservists that are sent overseas that are not full-time military, basically to defer some of the hardship from having to maintain not only a home here, but be deployed and have obviously salary cuts and things as a result of that. So it is basically just for Reservists and National Guards.
What about the regular guys?
The provision that we're allowed to vote on doesn't cover them. This is basically what this provision allows is for National Guardsmen and Reservists part-time that are deployed overseas.
Through the moderator, if I may also add. This is related specifically to Massachusetts General Law. This specific chapter is only for the Guardsmen and those overseas, and it gives a local option to accept this chapter or not. There is no language in the Massachusetts General Law to extend it beyond that. There are other chapters in these articles where we do have a veterans program. Two years ago, this town meeting approved of a veterans tax work-off program to help our veterans, and we did actually change, we're hoping to change the limits on it this evening, but we can only put an article on that's specific to the law, and the law is specific to the National Guardsmen and overseas. It's not a local law, it's a Massachusetts General Law. We're just voting to accept it or not.
In other words, we can make it for the rest of the military in the future then?
We have to follow Massachusetts General Law, sir. So Massachusetts General Law states the specific language of who's eligible for this, and under the law, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, it is the National Guardsmen and the overseas. That's all it is in this particular chapter and section. If any change is ever made to that, it would have to be made by the legislature. So someone could petition the legislature to make a change, but it would have to be done legislatively and passed at a state level. It's not a local law.
I still don't agree with it. It's like being one way. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, Plutius, Precinct 1. I believe that reservists sort of answers that. You can be in the Marines, Army, Navy, and you're a reservist, but if you're called up. So those other branches would be covered. It does not cover, as Kyle said, full-time servicemen. But the term reservist to me means Army, Navy, Air Force, any military person being called up. So it is covering.
Any other questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote, unanimous. Article 23, to see if the town meeting will vote to adjust the factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41C, as amended by Chapter 184, Section 51 of the Acts of 2002, by reducing the requisite age of eligibility to 67, increasing the gross receipts limit if married to 30,000, and a whole estate limit to 50,000, and increasing the gross receipts and whole estate limits by an amount equal to the Consumer Price Index each year, as determined by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning after July 1, 2017, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Raffi Bardabedian, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to adjust the factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41C, as amended by Chapter 184, Clause 51 of the Acts of 2002, by reducing the requisite age of eligibility to 67, increasing the gross receipts limit if married to 30,000, and whole estate limit to 50,000, and increasing the gross receipts and whole estate limits by an amount equal to the Consumer Price Index each year, as determined by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2017.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Mr. Dufour.
Tom Dufour, Precinct 5. I'm just trying to understand better what they're referring to with the gross receipts limits and the whole estate limits that are part of this article.
These exemptions are aimed for us senior citizens, for the elderly. When they apply, we have to qualify them based on their income and their assets, and they have to prove those to us. So basically, what we're trying to do is simply make adjustments for these incomes and income and assets that will allow us to offer more relief. The change in the age limit is a very conservative move from where we are now, to simply try to bring it in line with the age of retirement.
If I could follow up? So I'm just trying to figure out, so where it says property tax, are we talking like excise on a vehicle as opposed to real estate tax? Because if their whole estate is 50,000, I don't know of any homes in Auburn that are currently valued at 50,000. So I'm just trying to get an idea where that all kind of fits in, and if it applies to anybody.
The whole estate is basically bank accounts, savings, bonds, IRAs, those are considered assets. The value of the person's home does not count. The value of their motor vehicle does not count.
There's another question, sir. Oh, okay. Anybody else have a question? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote, unanimous. Article 24, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspection Services, DDIS, Animal Control Division, for the purpose of collecting fees received from kennel fees, including but not limited to reclamation, adoption, boarding fees, to credit any revenue received by DDIS, Animal Control, and authorize them to expend funds for the purpose of the animal care. There should be medical services and maintenance with expenditures not to exceed $10,000, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Rocco Moreno, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Developmental and Inspection Services, DDIS, Animal Control Division, for the purpose of collecting fees received from kennel fees, including but not limited to reclamation, adoption, and boarding fees, to credit any revenues received to DDIS, Animal Control, and authorize them to expend funds for the purpose of animal care, veterinary medical expenses, and maintenance with expenditures not to exceed $10,000, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? Those opposed? It's unanimous vote. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $12,700 from available funds, State primary election, account number 251007, for the purchase of electronic poll books to be used for various town-wide elections, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Maroys.
Ralph Maroys, Precinct 3. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $12,700 from available funds. I move that the Town Meeting vote to appropriate $12,700 from available funds, State Primary Election Account Number 251007, for the purchase of electronic poll books to be used for various townwide elections.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing anyone? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is unanimous vote.
Article 26. The CFC Town Meeting will vote to amend the Town of Auburn general bylaws by deleting Section 9.12, Dog License, Late Charge, Unlicensed Dogs, and inserting in place thereof a new Section 9.12, Dog Licenses, that are printed below, or act on anything relative there too. Printed below means in the warrant. Is there a motion on 26?
Mr. Moderator, Carla Moreno, Precinct 5. I move that the Town Meeting vote to amend the Town of Auburn general bylaws by deleting Section 9.12, Dog License, Late Charge, Unlicensed Dogs, and inserting in place thereof a new Section 9.12, Dog Licenses, as printed in the May 2, 2017 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote.
Article 27. The CFC Town Meeting will vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaws by revising Section 3.7.5 to insert, except as provided in Section 4.5, 10.5, such that the section reads as it appears on the warrant, numbers 1, 2, and 3, or act on anything relative there too. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Henry Tuskman, Precinct 2. I move that the Town Meeting vote to amend the Auburn zoning bylaws by revising Section 3.7.5, Section 4.5.10, and Section 7.4.1, as printed in the May 2, 2017 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Mrs. Holstrom.
Could someone give us a brief synopsis of what this does, please? We do have a brief presentation that the Town Planner will be giving on this, so I just want to give you just a brief overview on it before I turn it to Matt Benoit. Basically, the back in January, Total Outdoor Corporation, along with Auburn Mall LLC, approached Town Administration and the Board of Selectmen to seek an amendment to our zoning bylaw for the regional mall overlay district, which currently does not allow for billboards. They would like to install two billboards, and Matt will get into the details of that, that will be facing, the lettering on the billboards, they're double-sided billboards, and you'll see the shape, and the lettering faces the Massachusetts Turnpike. The mall would be doing this, obviously, to raise revenues through advertising to travelers on the Massachusetts Turnpike. Matt will present the overview of it for you, but the Board of Selectmen unanimously approved of sending it forward to the Planning Board, the Planning Board unanimously approved of recommending it to Town Meeting, the Finance Committee also recommended it. The reason the Finance Committee got involved in, and the other piece of this, is the mall, actually, excuse me, Total Outdoor, has made a proposal to the Town for a donation, and that donation would be a million dollars over 20 years. If they do get the signs in place and they do get them installed, if they're approved, it would be $500,000 a sign, or actually $50,000 a year for both signs, $25,000 a sign, for a total of a million dollars over 20 years. They would pay $250,000 upfront for the first five-year payment to the Town, and then on the year five, they would start paying the remaining $25,000 per billboard, or again, $50,000 per year. The other thing that they would be donating would be a total of 20 hours per month of use of those signs to the Town, which would be approximately five hours per sign face, so 20 hours per month for the Town to use the signs if we need to have them. They would also be donating to the Town an electronic sign, a small electronic billboard that we could use anywhere in town, similar to what we have at the fire station. The Town Administration, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Finance Committee all heard the presentation, and we all agree that if there was no negative impact to the Town, that this would be a very beneficial thing, not just to the Town, but obviously to the mall, because malls are trying to reinvent themselves and find a way to stay viable in this economy. And if we can help our largest taxpayer and our largest employer by revising and amending a bylaw that doesn't have a negative impact, then we were supportive of this. I'd like to have Matt come down and show you just a brief presentation of what was presented to the Board of Selectmen, as well as to the Planning Board, so you can actually see what it would look like. They're using new technology out of Canada, so when you hit a certain angle, and again, this is only visible, the lettering is only visible to cars on the Massachusetts Turnpike, and it's only at a certain angle. When you get to a certain angle, the way the billboards are constructed, they go completely blank, so you can't even see the lettering. So Matt, if you want to come down and get this started. So while he's coming down here, again, this was recommended unanimously by the Board of Selectmen and approved for bringing to you by the Planning Board. It's been through all the public processes. And Matt, are you ready? Now I'll turn it over to Matt Benoit, Town Planner. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit.
Good evening, Town Meeting members, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee. I'm Matthew Benoit, Town Planner. As Ms. Jacobson pointed out, these two billboards would be located in the Regional Mall District. This graphic that you're seeing now is a representation of some that are already erected in other parts of the country. As you can see from the three graphics atop, when you're looking straight at it, you'll be able to see the digital display. From 20 to 30 degrees off-center, you won't be able to see it as well, and from anything over 30 degrees off-center, you'll hardly see it at all. The representation underneath it is a nighttime, and one of the things that you want to point out in all four of the images that say summer camps is a little white light under the billboard that stays the same color, because that's an advertisement for the billboard company. So you can see the shading as it gets darker, as your angle increases from your point of view. So what I'd like to do is show you the analysis that Total Outdoor provided us. These are the two locations that they'll be located. If I can pick this up at the same time. Okay. This is the Auburn Mall. Mass Pike runs across. You have Auburn Street here to Central Street that leads up to Town Hall. This is St. Ed's or St. Joe's. The one sign will be located behind the core of the mall, and the other one will be located next to Sears roughly, and it'd be facing, dual-facing, in these general directions. So I'm going to examine each direction and show you which neighborhoods could have potential impact, and what that potential impact could look like with some imposed imagery. So as you saw in the first image, here's your direct view with the red arrow. The 20 to 30 percent area is this transition area. So we tried to note the streets that are located in this area, and pictures were taken by Total Outdoor, just to impose what that view could look like for residents in that area. Keep in mind that the Mass Pike is elevated higher than the mall. There is a hill here that overlooks the mall, and the residents that would know, and this is the lower piece that you can't see the mall from. This is the lower part of Central Street. This street here is approximately Munger Drive, and your view, even in the winter, has a lot of trees. It doesn't have a lot of evergreens, but even with a lot of the deciduous trees, you still have a very limited view of the area. You take that same west side, east-facing, you notice the transition area shows Mariana Drive here. This is mountain view. It wraps this way. The end of Arrowhead Ave, and this is Mariana Ave. So that transition area, if you go all the way to the end of Mariana Ave, you have to get up to the guardrail and look dead left, and this is an imposed image of what the billboard would look like from that perspective. Facing west and the east side behind the mall, Mariana Ave comes into play a little bit again, but it's in the less than 1 percent brightness area. And even so, you'll still see the structure. It's a little clearer, and you'll see from the next picture. There's that guardrail we just saw as we were looking to the left, and there's the imposed structure of the east side, but it wouldn't be facing this area directly. So the last space faced directly here into Central Street, the houses in this section that would have a feasible viewing area, won't have as good as an area, because this highway is elevated substantially, and you can't even see the mall from that point of view. So imagery didn't impose, if we didn't take imposed imagery from here, you wouldn't be able to see the billboard. But this area became my concern right out the gate, and I commend Total Outdoor for doing this analysis as we asked, because we brought up a lot of the key points in town as you think of. When you come off of Baggage Oak Street, you sit at the Central Street light, sometimes you park just under it where you can't even see the light. So one of the points that I wanted to make was, are we going to be seeing a light, or are we going to be seeing a billboard? So they took a good imposed example of that. This was where the real estate office was, and behind the photo is the O'Connell Law Firm, and that's approximately where you'd see the billboard, and the traffic light would be on the left-hand side, so it wouldn't conflict with your view of the traffic light. Another picture I just wanted to show, just so you could see the structure of the west side, is kind of how it would look over the Sears Building from Route 12. This is approximately taken from Starbucks, I believe. So I just want to point out a couple other things about the bylaw, if I may. Excuse me. I'm going to put this back on here. Hopefully I don't break it.
You want the lights back on?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm knocking things over. So on the first item, which is Section 3.7.5, this is on page 78, that's actually the prohibited uses listed in our bylaw. The only new piece of this is the part that's in parentheses that reads, except as provided in Section 4.5.10.5. Otherwise, billboards are prohibited throughout town. The second piece of this bylaw is Section 4.5.10.5. I'll just kind of highlight the points of this. This is to allow two double-sided billboards, only two, for the advertising on the Mass Turnpike, and to minimize visibility from other roadways or residences. They shall not exceed 100 feet in height. They have to be that tall, because the pike is approximately, I think, 60 or 70 feet off the ground, so the billboard needs to be able to be seen from the Mass Pike. We put in a provision as a recommendation from the Building Commissioner to make this so that they cannot be located within 200 feet of any residences. I don't think either of these are within 1,000 feet from any residences at this point. And the, one thing I wanted to point out was the imagery, is that Mass DOT requires that the images would not change any quicker than every 10 seconds, and they can't be transitional or animated, and that's also outlined in here. They also come equipped with automatic dimming technology, and they can't exceed a certain brightness above ambient light administered from a distance of 50 feet. So even at night, when they're presumably the brightest, they will have a dimming feature to not exceed a certain brightness. The third and final part of the bylaw is Section 7.4.1. It's number three. This is part of the sign bylaw. The information is still the same, except for the first part of the sentence that reads, except as provided in Section 4.5.10.5. And I just want to echo what the Town Manager said earlier, that the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee all unanimously approve this for the reasons that we understand. We know this isn't adding more billboards throughout town in any other zones, this is just for the two at the mall. This will help the mall's economic future with a new revenue stream. It's also a good opportunity for the Town as well, with the portable sign that the Town Manager mentioned, and also advertising services for town events across the Mass Pike. So I also am in favor of this, and I certainly support the recommendations from all three of those boards and committees. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Dufour.
So Tom Dufour, Precinct 5. Could you state again, what was the, one of the quick proquos as far as amount of hour time that the Town gets on the billboards?
I just want to make sure I'm correct here. I believe it's 20 hours a month, or five hours a month per side. So basically, there were two billboards, each with two sides, so that's four sides. And it is five hours per operational sign face per month, for a total of 20 hours per month.
So is there any thought on what we would possibly put up there that would make it worthwhile?
In general, communities that have had this and have the offer to use it for advertisement may use it for a community event or an emergency situation. We probably wouldn't have need to use it on a regular basis for 20 hours a month. The smaller sign, the electronic sign, we would imagine that we would be using that on a daily basis, 24/7 all around town. We're always moving our electronic sign around. We don't have nearly enough for the events, the traffic situations, the road closings, and things like that. But basically, if a road was closed, if you had an accident, and a car was going to get off the pike, and they wouldn't be able to take a right onto Route 12, you could potentially put something like that up there. We would have to coordinate with the company to see what hours are available. But again, it's available to us if we want it. It's generally for emergency purposes or for community events.
Wouldn't an emergency situation supersede whatever financial benefit that the billboard people with the mall would get out of it if a situation like you stated arose?
In an emergency situation, it's my understanding anyway under the law that a community has, I wouldn't say the right, but the opportunity to put up emergency signs throughout the Commonwealth. The reason that we were recommending it wasn't actually because of the 20 hours a month of free signage, that really, it's a very nice thing to offer to us, and if we need it for a reason, it's there. I think the more beneficial thing, first of all, to the mall and to the Town, is if this is a revenue source for the mall, and it can help maintain their stability here, and help maintain them as our number-one taxpayer and our number-one job creator, and keep them viable, then that's a good thing. The million dollars in a donation to the Town over a 20-year period with a $250,000 payment upfront may give us the opportunity to implement some of these strategies that just came out in the new Drury Square Vision Plan that was completed in February. Some of those strategies that we would like to give thought for this, if it goes forward, would be to potentially do the improvements to the Gaudet Park behind the fire station, to maybe do some of the improvements that were brought up in that plan, to the pond, and some drainage work there, potentially a fountain there, to replace or repair the fountain that's there, make that area really vibrant and attractive, because that will not just help the mall, it'll help businesses in Drury Square. Some of the other economic development strategies that came out of that plan were wayfinding signage and attractive aesthetically pleasing banners, plantings. We are working right now with Mass Highway, because they're going to be doing some improvements along Auburn Street anyway, so we're working with them to make sure that those improvements are in keeping with the Drury Square Plan. A donation like this might be able to help us do additional things over and above what would be done on the roadwork part. So that's, to us, that was more of the benefit than the 20 hours a month, but I don't want to say that 20 hours a month might not be used, but it's a very generous offer to the Town if there is a use for it. Perhaps it would be something that the school department would need to have someday, to advertise something that the schools are doing. We haven't thought exactly what would, haven't gone that far as to think what we would use that for.
And what happens when the company that's proposing? And what, what happens when the company that's proposing this sells? Or what happens after the 20-year donation period? Or what happens when the electronic sign that they're going to donate upfront needs to be replaced?
Well, first of all, this is a, this is a donation to the town. This is not a negotiated payment. Under Mass General Law, the towns, towns do not have the authority right now to negotiate impact fees. And this would basically, if it's negotiated, it's an impact fee. So this is a donation. So the donation is, would be offered to the town. We would sign an MOA with the company that outlines what the donation would be. That is the extent of the donation. The donation would end at 20 years. The, that is what has been offered to the town. The planning board, in looking at it as they do in everything that comes through, and I'll ask Matt if he needs to add to this, but would it be ensuring what would happen to any structure that becomes, if you're saying if it's going to be abandoned? But if after 20 years, the structure's still there and still operating, there wouldn't be any concerns to the town as long as it's maintained properly?
So then it's a, after 20 years?
We have more people that ask questions, if you don't mind. Yes, sir. And your hand was up, I believe. Dunston, Precinct 2. Matt, what was the height of the signs again? And are these going to be affixed to the roof of the mall or are they going to be near the mall? As we all know, you can see the mall pretty easy coming down the Mass Pike, right where it is.
Tell me, these will be a maximum of 100 feet tall and they'll be freestanding signs that will not be fixed to the roof of the mall.
And what is the type of advertising? Does it, anything in the agreement specify what they're going to advertise on it? Or, you know, are they going to be advertising, you know, Acme tires out of Worcester? Or are they going to be advertising specific Auburn, you know, things at the mall? And should we, if they aren't, should we specify that they do to actually bring people to Auburn? That was my only question. Thank you.
So in our discussions with Total Outdoor, when they came to the planning board, was a similar question to that, was would local businesses have a preference to advertise over area businesses? So we're looking to advertise our own economy. And they were very amenable to that. And it seemed a very positive idea that, that we approached them with and they were receptive to it towards.
I would very strongly recommend and certainly support doing this much more if that was in the agreement. Thank you. Thank you. Had somebody in the middle here someplace? Okay.
Hi, Dennis Natoli, Precinct 1. We've got all the kind of good news and things that the sign company puts forth, but they don't put forth the negative. We have a lot of experience with billboards in Auburn since we were the crossroads of all the towns. So that's why they were prohibited because they were actually a lure of light on the community. And what we're talking about here is 100-foot large TV, basically on a stick, that's going to be hanging over the town of Auburn. It will be seen from, from various places in town. As you can see in what they propose in a picture, they don't really show the illumination, okay? These are LED lights. They will be seen from, you know, I know you say 200 feet from a home, but they'll seem, be seen 20,000 feet away. Second of all, the impact, when we do a bylaw, it shouldn't be to benefit one person, okay? So one person gets to make a lot of money and has a negative impact on the neighbors in the area. Some of that impact you'll see with these because when states that had these, they found that they're actually proposing legislation to ban them again. One study that just came out was the effect on driving, the distraction. They, the University of Alabama ran two studies, one in Florida and one in Alabama. And that's paid for by DOT, by the way. They found that the increase in accidents in the areas of these signs were from 25% to 29%. So there is a, there is actually, the bylaw is not really meant to preserve economic value of one person's property. I mean, it does that, if that's the byproduct of it being safe community. And that's what the bylaw should be for. I know they're offering us a lot as far as these carrots to get us to put this in there. But again, this is a large LED, two of them, screens on 100-foot stick that you will see from all parts of the town. And we might want to think if we, before we go ahead and have them build it and it's up there, the, that effect, it might have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions that I missed?
Mr. Moderator, may I respond?
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, may I respond just on behalf of the town to Mr. Natoli?
Oh, you want to respond to him?
If I may. I just wanted to point out, just to the folks at town meeting, and I certainly sympathize with what Mr. Natoli is saying. The vote of town meeting this evening would not allow Total Outdoor to build these things tomorrow. They would still have to go in front of the planning board for site plan review. And the planning board will look at aspects of public safety and they can require a peer review study to ensure that the measures of the billboard apply to state standards, et cetera. So there's still a public hearing process that would follow, according to the bylaw, that we, that's before you this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Beth Proudie, Precinct 1. If you've been around Auburn and town meetings as long as I have, almost 100 years, you'd remember when Joe Shannon, a very well-respected member of our community and a former selectman, came before a town meeting. And if my memory serves me right, it took more than one town meeting. But we voted to get rid of all the billboards down Southbridge Street. And it took a long time. And Dennis Natoli is only 90 and he remembers it too. I hesitate to vote for a billboard and I'm sorry to do that, but I think I'll vote no.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, up in the dark.
Ms. Grivens, Precinct 5. And Matt, I applaud you for bringing this forward. It's always nice to see a way to generate some revenue for the town. However, I have to say with all due respect, the pictures that were provided are, were taken during the day. And so I would agree with Mr. Natoli. I think that our residents are going to be able to see those signs and especially when they're going, like a television set, exactly what Mr. Natoli said, I too will be voting against this.
Thank you. Sir, you haven't spoken yet.
Just a point of parliamentary procedure. A lot of these haven't been questioned. So should we open the floor for debate or committee of the whole?
We don't, ask them a question, but let's...
What?
Well, go ahead. We start. Well, I didn't really hear what you said, to be honest with you.
No, I'm just saying that a lot of these haven't been questioned. So I'm saying, should we open this, the floor to a debate or committee of the whole or something where people can express ideas?
No.
No, that's not...
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I agree with everything that Mr. Natoli said. We served together in the Zodi Board of Appeals for many years. I also was with Beth Proudie when those, we worked so hard on getting rid of those billboards that were so terrible all over the place. My fear is we are, we are opening the door to other generous companies coming in. Now, I know that changing the bylaw is not easy. And I agree it should not be for one company. So I urge that we vote this down. Thank you.
We've more or less had everybody. Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone's clear. We did not recommend this because of any donation that was given to us. As a matter of fact, the very first time that we met with the mall and Total Outdoor, our comment to them was, let's look at this as far as what the impact is on the community and then let's discuss if the town is willing to accept a donation. We made that clear, they understood that. We said we were not interested in any donation that would have a negative impact. That's why it went through the whole process of the planning board with the public hearing and all of the questions that were asked. And it was only at that point, when it passed through the planning board, that we then discussed with Total Outdoor what a form of an agreement would look like. This isn't being brought to you because of an agreement. What we're here to tell you is a donation has been offered to the town. That is not why we're proposing this, however. This was proposed as a, as a revision or amendment to a current bylaw. So all good points, all understandable. I just want to make it clear that that was not the reason that the town brought this forward at all. It was brought forward as a revision to a bylaw to assist our largest employer in, with the ability to advertise. There are other billboards in town. We and the planning board liked the technology of this one because at night, Ms. Grivens, at night, the pictures, you can't see them unless you're at that specific angle. So there was one night slide that was up there and you'll be able to see it as a driver on the Mass Pike. But from the other points in town, all around it, in that arc that Matt showed you, all you'll see is black, other than I believe it was that one small base at the bottom that you could see the name of the company. But again, I just want to be clear, we don't want town meeting to make a decision because of a donation, but we feel we have to tell you that a donation's been offered.
Mrs. Holstrom has moved the question. It's non-debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? Then I think we better count. This will be a two-thirds vote, by the way. All those in favor, raise your hands. So you're voting to move the question. If you vote yes for this, the next thing will be to vote on the question. But it has to be a two-thirds vote. All vote? We have moved the question 61 to 16. Now are you ready for a question? What, Mr. Dufour?
Mr. Moderator, I call the quorum.
There's no reason to call a quorum because I looked out and some people did not vote. And it came out to 77. And I had people walking in, so I would prefer not to. If you really want it, then we'll come, probably, we may have to end up coming back tomorrow night.
Did you have 70? Kristen, did you have 87? I have 83.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. No, excuse me. What? Yeah, we need a two-thirds vote. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The question, so we're going over right now, is to amend the bylaws to allow the billboards. It appears on page 78 of your book, goes to 79 and then on to 80. So all those that have opposed to the billboards, please raise your hand. Oh, wait a minute, we already voted on it. Excuse me, we already voted on it. That's my fault. We already voted on it before the quorum was challenged. The vote was 77 people vote, uh, 77?
That was a vote to move the question.
I want it. Okay, I think you're right. You're right, you're right. We got to vote, yeah. No, I'm sorry, you're right. Too many votes, that's the problem. We voted to move the question. Then we come to the quorum. So now we'll vote on the question. We'll do the, those in favor, first of all. All those in favor, please raise your hand. In favor of having Article Number 27 pass. Article 27. If you're in favor of Article 27, please raise your hand. Now, those opposed, please raise your hand. It is defeated forty-seven to thirty-three. Article twenty-eight. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to amend Town Bylaw sixteen point zero four, adequate public safety, police and fire, radio coverage in buildings or structures, section eight, connectivity, connectivity A, which now reads, "There shall be no connectivity between the building radio system and the fire alarm system," to read now, "There shall be connectivity between the building radio system and the fire alarm system as determined by the fire chief or their designate, or act on anything relative thereto." Is there a motion on Article twenty-eight? Mr. Capaldi.
Mr. Moderator, Ralph Capaldi, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to amend bylaw sixteen point zero four, adequate public safety, police and fire, radio coverage in buildings or structures, section eight, connectivity A, which now reads, "There shall be no connectivity between the in-building radio system and the fire alarm system," to now read, "There shall be connectivity between the in-building radio system and the fire alarm system as determined by the fire chief or their designate."
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article twenty-nine. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to general laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight H.B., or any other enabling legislation for taxes attributable to solar, photovoltaic facilities installed or to be installed on property within the town of Auburn on such terms and conditions, and for a term of years as the town manager deems in the best interest of the town, and to take any other action necessary or convenient for the implementation and administration of such agreement, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mrs. Holmes-Holstrom.
I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pursuant to general laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight H.B., or any other enabling legislation for taxes attributable to a solar photovoltaic facility installed or to be installed on property within the town of Auburn on such terms and conditions, and for a term of years as the town manager deems in the best interest of the town, and to take any other action necessary or convenient for the implementation and administration of such agreement.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? Where? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Well, Pluticus, Precinct One. How many tens of thousands of dollars has the town earned or saved, or however you want to put it, from our town meeting members' vote a few years ago on two solar farms individually? Please, and is there a bylaw on solar yet? Those are my questions.
Mr. Moderator, we've had a couple of different votes on town meeting. The first vote we had was specific to a certain company. I believe it was called Revolution Energy, and I believe it was in 2012. And that was to enter into a net metering credit agreement with Revolution. Revolution was going to be leasing thirty acres of land and putting up a solar farm, and the town was going to be the off-taker to that of approximately two to three megawatts. That project did not go forward. Revolution Energy, as many of the solar energy firms, did not get the credits, and I believe the other issue that they had was they didn't get the hookup with National Grid that they needed to move the project forward. The following year, we came into town meeting, and we were approved by town meeting similar to this, to enter... It was a generic vote to enter into a net metering credit agreement, not naming the company, because what we were finding is companies were turning over so fast that between the year point of annual meeting to annual meeting, these companies were being sold. And the tax credits were maxed out on the state level. So, what would happen is if we had a specific company we were working with, and they ran out of tax credits at the state level, they would sell their interest to another company, who'd then go for the tax credit. So, we came to town meeting and asked for a generic vote, which allowed us to enter into an agreement. Subsequently, we entered into two additional agreements. Only one came to fruition. One was with... It has changed names three times, which is the industry. It's now Sun Edison. And this was the first year that we've been getting those tax credits. So, the estimated tax credits to the town over twenty years, I believe, is about 1.6 million. And again, that's estimated. We've had a couple of other agreements that, again, the companies backed out because they couldn't get their state tax agreements. We've been following legislation, and it looks like they may be raising that cap at some point. This particular article is structured similar to that. The difference here is, we have a... We've had several solar companies come to the town and tell us that they're going to be moving forward to lease land and put up a solar facility. The town, at this point, may or may not have any additional capacity to be an off-taker because we do have a net metering credit agreement with Sun Edison. If we do have that capacity and it's to our benefit, we would definitely want to do that under the prior town meeting vote. This particular one is to enter into a pilot agreement. We did have one previous pilot agreement with Revolution Energy. Again, that did not go forward because they didn't get their connections with National Grid. Under the recent law, and the assessor can answer any more specific questions, but the general gist of this is, under the law in Massachusetts now, solar companies... The law has changed. Solar companies are taxable, but it is being challenged, and some communities... Excuse me, some companies have won that challenge to be tax exempt. So, it is recommended that communities move forward and enter into a pilot agreement. A pilot means payment in lieu of taxes. A pilot agreement is structured based on the value of the equipment, just like we would assess it as personal property, but you change that assessment from a personal property to a pilot agreement, and you still have to... Under the law now, you have to have depreciation involved in your pilot agreement. The benefit to a town of a pilot agreement, let's say it's a twenty-year pilot agreement, it gives you a consistent source of revenue over those twenty years versus a huge payment upfront that's then discounted considerably as that equipment devalues. It will still be... It will still discount every year because you have to devalue it. The benefit to the company is that they know how much they're going to have to pay every year. Given that there have been challenges, and they have been... Some companies have won them, we felt that it would be in the best interest of the town to enter into a pilot agreement, because if the state law changes and makes these facilities tax exempt again, it's our understanding that the pilot agreement will supersede the change in the law. So, the town would still get their taxes. Without a pilot agreement, if the law changes and there are legislation pending to do that, I don't know what will happen to it, but it is... It has been a hot topic of conversation at the legislature. If that were to happen, and we didn't have a pilot agreement, and we were taxing the company, that would go into effect, and we could no longer tax the company.
Thank you. Any other... Any other questions?
We do not have a specific solar bylaw. I'm looking up there. I can't see if I can see that.
Any other question?
I believe this... I'm going to have Matt answer this, but I believe the zoning bylaw review committee is looking to develop a solar bylaw, but I don't believe that they have completed that. Is that correct?
Mr. Benoit.
Yes. The zoning bylaw review committee is currently in the process of reviewing a draft. We've compiled some solar bylaws from other communities in trying to fit it to Auburn's template. We've had one meeting on it so far, but we're hoping to produce a draft in advance of our fall town meeting this year.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article twenty-nine. No, excuse me, Article thirty. The C F T Town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from the overlay surplus for miscellaneous building facility improvements. Eighteen thousand to remodel the second floor bathrooms in the town hall. Tunnel repairs, fourteen thousand. DPW building repairs, eighteen thousand. Paint town hall, three thousand. Purchase install cold security locks at the town hall, a thousand. Police station roof replacement, thirty thousand. Police station ventilation, six thousand. Contingency, ten thousand, for a total of a hundred thousand, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Martin.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Martin, Precinct Two. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $100,000 from overlay surplus for miscellaneous building facility improvements as printed in the May second, 2017 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article thirty-one. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to appropriate, from available funds, sale of real estate, two-six-one-zero-one-seven, a sum of $50,000 for the purpose of constructing a DPW facilities maintenance workshop located at the Auburn DPW, five Milbury Street, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Proudie.
Mr. Moderator, Ron Proudie, Precinct One. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate, from available funds, sale of real estate, two-six-one-zero-one-seven, a sum of $50,000 for the purpose of constructing a DPW facilities maintenance workshop located at the Auburn DPW, five Milbury Street.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Unanimous. Article thirty-two. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to appropriate, from available funds, sale of real estate, two-six-one-zero-one-seven, a sum of $32,000 to perform additional site assessment and environmental monitoring at five Milbury Street to achieve a permanent site closure through the Department of Environmental Protection, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Sarah Struzina, Precinct Three. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate, from available funds, sale of real estate, two-six-one-zero-one-seven, a sum of $32,000 to perform additional site assessment and environmental monitoring at five Milbury Street to achieve permanent site closure through the Department of Environmental Protection.
Is there a second? There is a second. Anybody have a question? Not seeing anybody then? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article thirty-three. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to appropriate, from general fund revenue, a sum of $42,000 for the installation of a ventilation system at the DPW garage building... Right, the DPW Highway Building Garage located at five Milbury Street, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Jeff Mitchell, Precinct Three. I move the town meeting vote to appropriate, from general fund revenues, a sum of $42,000 for the installation of a ventilation system at the DPW Highway Building Garage located at five Milbury Street.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor, raise their hand. All those opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Article thirty-four. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to amend the town of Auburn zoning bylaws as follows: Section two point two, zoning map; Section four point one, two point one, floodplain district; Section three point nine, point four point six, electric vehicle charging stations; and Section three point nine, point five, temporary commercial activities, as outlined in the warrant, or they act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Sarah Struzina, Precinct Three. I move that town meeting vote to amend the town of Auburn zoning bylaws as follows: Section two point two, zoning map; Section four point one, point two point one, floodplain district; Section three point nine, point four six, electric vehicle charging stations and station in Section three point nine, point five, temporary commercial activities as printed in the May second, 2017 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise their hands. All those opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Article thirty-five. The C F T Town Meeting will vote to amend the town of Auburn zoning bylaws to create Section three point three, temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana, or as described in the warrant, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes, Sarah.
All right. Last one. Sarah Struzina, Precinct Three. I move that town meeting vote to amend the town of Auburn zoning bylaws to create Section three point three, temporary mortuary on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana, to read as printed in the May second, 2017 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Yes, Sarah. You have a question?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Any... No questions? All those in favor, raise their hand. All those opposed? It is a vote. Two-thirds? Is it two-thir... Wait a minute, excuse me. Is it two-thirds? Well, it's a two-thirds vote. It's a... Sorry about that. Yeah. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Wait a minute. The vote passes seventy-one to three. A motion to dissolve?
No.
Second? All those in favor?
No.
All those opposed?
Three.[1769.11]